We're going to call to order the August 21st meeting of the Trinity County Supervisors. Our first order of business is to report out on the August 7th meeting on the closed session where direction is given to staff on the attorney issue. All right, with that, we'll ask Supervisor Chappell to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every nation has its own.
All right, public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited for three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a poll through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to a specific matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule a matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Good morning, Chair. Board, any keys for Hapork? I'd like to speak briefly about the self-distribution transport-only license, specifically that one, not one only. It's going to be a real important factor this coming year as distribution statewide is taking a long time to get off the ground and transport-only licenses, commercial hauling transport-only licenses are really difficult to come by. Whereas this one, the self-distribution transport-only license, I've got a number of things in PCC here, including the regulations on page 54 of the new regulations, line E specifically, or no, it's line, yes, it is line. The self-distribution transport-only license we attach to a cultivation license is said to be exempt from all the security requirements for a full transportation license. Rather than regulations, no cameras, no bars on the windows, no fence, no nothing. This should be an administrative-type permit with zero land use in it because the premises will already be designated under a cultivation license. That's point number one, I suppose. Point number two is this letter I've got from PCC from email. It states that you're allowed to store your records for your transport-only self-distribution at your premises, in your premises, for your cultivation site. And it also says you don't need an entire building, an office suite, it can even just be a closet. So I think that we should really reduce these factors there and try and get that out of planning. And at the same time, hopefully, at that point, we can see a reduction in the fee because there will be very little need for inspection. The inspection will be covered underneath the cultivation, annual inspections, and the state is offering the self-distribution up to $3 million for $500 for the annual fee. And I would like to see a number similar to that. If we can pull this out of the planning department and out of land use, I think that's attainable. Unfortunately, I can't stick around for the rest of the meeting. I'd love to hear if there might be a chance to be discussion on this, but I would like to see it on the agenda in the future, soon, to redraft that and add a new license category to strictly self-distribution transport-only. That would be very attainable for the farms. The way things look, it seems that every single farm is going to need one of these. We're out here in the geographically, been getting distributors to come up, but the price they charge for transportation makes, there's no money left at the end of the day. And the fore-hire transport-only licenses are going to be a long time coming. And so I'm going to need one of these. Everyone I need is going to need one of these. And so far, I know one person who's actually been through the process and received one, and that was yesterday that they actually received. And now they have to enter into the state process and see when that license gets approved. And so we're all going to need these by November. And I would hope to see a very simplified and easy process.
Adrian, if you have that number, if you could give it to the, I'll step here and she'll give it to us later. Sorry, go look it up.
Thank you.
Is that a request we're considering to have this agenda?
As soon as possible. Maybe we can discuss it. Staff brought some stuff to us. We'll get some things. So it certainly is on our menu right now.
Kate Graves from Lewiston. So one of my neighbors, an elderly couple who, they aren't on their property anymore. I think one of them's ill and they're not living on the property anymore, had a notice tacked up for a violation of fence code. Their fence, the wood is three feet tall. And I saw the guy measuring it. And because the ground goes under it a little bit in places, he gave him a code violation for having a fence that's over three feet. And not only is it that ludicrous, where the law comes from is just as badly done. I went and researched it because I was so mad. I went back and took a big trip and I looked into it. So basically, what you guys have done is you've taken the state code that says when you have a driveway and you're entering into a road, your fence can only be three feet tall, or you have to be able to see through it. And you've taken that rule and you've turned it into every fence on every road, every highway, every county road, even close to the county road. And then you've done your, each and every day, a violation exists, distinct and separate violation. So you've just piled on. And I don't know if you piled on to these people because they're not there and there's just a Realtor sign there, but I mean, that's egregious. It's unspeakable what you guys are doing to these people over a fence that's literally three feet tall. And your moneymaker went out there and measured the dirt under it and deemed it a violation. I've asked your Fresno law firm how you can enforce county code on private property. I've never received an answer. I've received some blah, blah, blah from them. I want the law that states that you guys can enforce county code on private property because you're doing this. I know you can't follow up on all your employees, but this is what you guys have mandated them because they're your employees. Everyone who's not an elected official is your employees. It lands right in your guys' lap. And so you guys have done this. And you've done it to a bunch of people, and it's for nothing but money and power tripping. And then there's other people who seem to get a pass because I requested information on their property and I did not get it. So obviously, I either was denied the public information, or these people didn't have to do, pay for their fences the way this elderly couple, I guess, I don't know if they're paying for it. They're not even there. I don't even know if they know. And you guys just, you ramrod this on everybody. And it's just so, it's so banana belt country stuff. And you guys need to take control and it lands straight in your lap. And you need to fix this. And I don't think you will because you make money off of it. And she wants you guys in the state for doing this.
Jake Rose from Hapork. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. As I understand it, DuLaure County is supposed to work, is that the board considers policy issues that are then made into ordinances. Subordinate departments are supposed to administer and enforce the ordinances. Questions of interpretation are directed to the county council, and the CAO ensures compliance among the department heads. I wish that was how our planning department worked. Instead, we have a clerk apparently interpreting and developing policy with no oversight. No-licensed growers had a more challenging season than Jordan Davis, who was incorrectly rated weeks before his first harvest. How is it that he is also determined to be one of the only handful of licenses to get planning's latest invention, the temporary provisional license? Does that sound familiar from the ordinance? Probably not, because it's not in there. We've not even gotten to one legal harvest yet. How is a licensed grower supposed to afford all the ancillary conditions that are in no way related to state licensing requirements? And why was Jordan singled out? I know for a fact, his operation is in the top echelon of licensed operations in the entire Emerald Shrine, not just this county. I've had the privilege of doing consulting work for a licensed distribution company that is unfortunately not local, and have had occasion to see numerous farms throughout Trinity, Humble, and Mendocino counties. The number in Trinity of state-licensed farms that distributors are able to work with seems to hover around 100 farms. How is that decoupling suddenly an issue again? What was the point of all the time we put in on the subject over a year ago? When licensees get direction after participating in the process, attending board meetings, and reading the ordinances, we rely on what we're told and allocate our limited resources that way. When planning comes up with its own requirements and throws nothing but roadblocks in the path. The state is far more interested in actually helping applicants get into the licensing program and track and trace. How come our planning department takes our money to do the opposite? What's the real number of licensees that left the program this season versus new ones who joined? If I was a board member, I'd be pretty pissed off right now. After the countless hours we have all spent developing a local program, now see planning ensure that it never gets off the ground? I don't use this word very often, but this is malarkey. I googled. I want to see this succeed. I don't know that there's anybody in the county that wants to see this succeed more than I do. But what's going on is not, it's not working. It's not. You know, I don't hold it against anybody on this board, but there's a massive disconnect between what's going on in this room and what's going on out in the field. And for probably the six farmers that attend here, we know what's going on in this room. We're all human beings. We know your guys' intent. We watch you guys discuss it for hours and hours on end and beat it until your intent is very clear. But then that's not transcribed out into the field. And for all the other farmers who don't make the time to come here, they have no idea. So they just take what they're told and just get slapped over the head by planning. We gotta fix this.
Good morning, Supervisors. John Brower from Junction City, and two things I'd like to touch on briefly. One is the current crisis that our commercial cannabis program is in with the lack of transportation available to get product off of farms and to market. The state has come out and offered a distribution transport only and a self-distribution distributor license types. They've been working on this in Sacramento, trying to make it something that can actually function. And you guys passed a really, a pretty good ordinance, right, in the first days of talk about these other license types. And I remember the day they passed, the ad hoc explaining to planning that there really is no land use nexus on self-distribution or transport only. It's basically a file cabinet and a place where your car is registered. And the planning department has done a mostly good job trying to implement the ordinances, but they really overreached these two license types and created this crazy checklist of other items. So here we are, a few months into the distribution ordinance. We have, planning has one distributor transport-only licensee in the county. They're not operational yet. Another three or four that are up on deck. And we are truly in a crisis where licensed cultivators still can't move last year's product. And we're coming up on a new harvest cycle here in just a few weeks. So I was in Sacramento yesterday and lobbying for some other changes that I think will help Trinity folks. And I want everybody to understand that the state is very aware of this problem and they're taking action to address it. They're softening the mandates on these two license types in particular, and encouraging counties to do the same and allow this supply chain to start moving right now and take the brakes off and let it roll. So many of us have been in touch with planning lately. It's become a big issue. Leslie, Scott, and Rachel have all expressed a willingness to whittle down or even set aside this overreaching checklist, at least temporarily, to allow more streamlined licensure on these two critical license types. And it's going to be talked about, and I'll finish some other time.
Good morning. My name is Mike Corrigan from Hapork, and I'm here to address the board on your consideration today of Congressman Huffman's House Resolution 6596.
Mike, we're going to have discussion on this.
During that, is the time?
Yes, I'm going to have public discussion.
Good morning. Bronca Kelly-Abbe's Douglas City resident. I want to touch upon what Mr. Brower said, who has worked so diligently to help move these ordinances and these licensing board. I do want to have a little bit, as someone who is maybe a neighbor, when you're going through that checklist, there may be some things that can be loosened up, but self-regulation sometimes doesn't work. Enforcement is limited here. So when we're going into something new, we just want to keep in mind that it's easier to take things away than to add a bunch of things onto people. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about taking away, you know, checking this and making sure they're doing this right or keeping these records right. When I started my own business, I had to follow those rules. It's a different business, but it's still a business. And if we want to talk about it like a business, I think it should be treated like a business. We all have home businesses sometimes, but just remember the neighbors that are next to them as well.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I was going to talk about something else, but I guess there's a theme going, so I'll stick with it. In terms of implementing the program, I know we're kind of inventing something to put on something that already exists, and that's always a challenging thing to do. It would be one thing if there were no cannabis here and say, hey, we've got great rules. If you want to do it, here's how you do it. The state's faced with the same situation and actually had the opportunity to attend a few of the inspections that the state inspectors did. They're still in the heady days of, we've got to get people into the program. Don't you guys know people not licensed yet? Get them in. You know, the couple of us who were there, we've been saying that for a while now. I still think we want to see participation in this program, not only for people who maybe have not done it yet, but still may, but certainly we want to keep the participation of the people who have already gone into the foray. And, you know, granted, this is a legal business, and so it comes with all the requirements of legal business in California, but there's a lot of them. I think everybody is getting, for lack of a better term, sober in reality about what that means. Then there are also the unique regulations to cannabis. Like, we've discussed here many times, it's hard to run an agricultural business when you can't use water, for instance. That's a toughie. But we have to maneuver around this. So flexibility on the part of the county, I think the board has given direction for flexibility. It doesn't always translate down. I hope that it does continue. And a couple of people have mentioned the expense. You know, the 2017 harvest, legally speaking, a company in California wasn't able to profit until January 1st of 2018. So we really haven't even gotten into our first legal full-season harvest. That's coming up. So as these expand, most of the moves require money. So it would be nice if we could at least see some, you know, on-the-books money for a company to be able to spend to go forward. So anyway, I know it's probably best to not be all cannabis all the time, but so goes the day.
All right, no other public comment. We will go to presentations, which has been canceled. Unfortunately, the Lake Center could not make it today, so they're going to reschedule for a different day. We will move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters, and will be act upon by the board by one. A roll call motion, a member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be pulled. So Ms. Chappell, here we go.
Yes, item 2.8.
Okay, Ms. Morris.
Good to know.
Mr. Mine.
Mr. Finley.
No, sir.
Nothing from me. Anybody from staff? Okay, John. I'd like to pull 210.
Possible to pull 2.6.
Darryl pulled mine. They shouldn't have let him go first.
Any other from the public? Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chappell?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chappell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mine? Supervisor Brow? Aye. All right, is that any better? Can you hear us now, John?
Yeah.
On to item 2.6, approval letter to the Fish and Game Advisory Commission from the Trinity County Fish and Game Advisory Commission, supporting the five-county xamnoid conservation program Weaver Creek in stream flow improvement project to improve fish habitat. No fiscal impact. So Darryl, you had a question?
Yeah, Darryl Forzal, Weaverville. I don't know whether I'm opposed or in favor of this particular project. I'm a riparian owner of the Super Creek and think that it would be beneficial for somebody like me to understand the project before we go forward. Apparently, they've talked to the appropriative owners, at least some of them, because they talk about it in the backup. But as far as I know, there's been no communication with the riparian owners on Weaver Creek. And I think that's probably the majority of the users on Weaver Creek is the riparian owners, not the appropriative owners. So I just would like to have a chance to get some information as a riparian owner about what this project is before it gets busted from the county.
So you're asking this to be delayed?
Just, yeah. Something, I mean, I think there needs to be maybe something like a community meeting or something. I'm not sure what's, I don't know what the project is.
I agree.
And so without knowing what the project is, it may not impact me at all. But without knowing what the project is, it feels like I should have a little bit of an understanding as to how it might impact me and the other riparian owners on the creek.
Okay. In case, since you were going to talk about it.
Kate Graves from Lewiston. That was part of my concern, was it didn't seem like people were properly contacted and informed. And also, I had some other issues about, you know, whether there's a ditch coming off there, whether that's a single owner or not. I mean, it doesn't discuss the number of owners and that they're willing to sell, to sell to a willing owner. That's kind of vague. I mean, are they willing because they can't use it anymore? I mean, I agree with Darryl. It would be great before you guys did something that could be this big and impact so many people that we know more about it. If you, you're okaying a project with a simple letter without, like Darryl said, knowing what the project entails, where it can lead to. I mean, it could get to the point where no one can use water from this creek. And I get this is a high-priority creek because it's so small, but also to have someone that's basically, you know, an ex-county employee who's now, has a business that he basically does work for the government through contracts, doing this doesn't make me feel any more at ease about what's going on here. So to make sure that the people who are directly impacted are more informed about everything. You know, if they don't care, they don't care, but give them the information, give them what the project is, not just a summary of the project. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to come back and open it up to regular public comment. So John, you brought this?
Absolutely, and I am prepared to make a motion if you'd like.
Well, we'll still have public comment. Any other questions of John before?
Did they do a presentation from the Fish and Game Commission?
No.
Do you know if they did an outreach to the neighborhood?
They did not, I do know.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions, John? All right, we'll open up to public comment.
Since this is the Weaverville Water Source, how does this affect our drinking water?
That's a question that needs to be asked, too.
We're looking at Kelly-Abbe's again, but this time with the Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Recreation District, which has a portion of that in. We also have not gotten any details about this, so I'm echoing Darryl right now. We'd really love to know more before any of our rights are taken away for use in LeFong
Any more public comment? With that, we'll come back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Make a motion for the board to deny this request, send it back to the Fish and Game Advisory Board with some of the comments that have been put forward today.
Okay.
Second.
All right, move into second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right. Move on to 2.8, approve the special meeting minutes of July 30th and regular meeting minutes of August 7th submitted by a deputy clerk. No fiscal impact. Bobby?
So the July 30th minutes, I have no problem with in all, but item 5.8 of the August 7th minutes, I have no problem with. But if you want to turn, it would be on page 146.
Okay.
Wait.
And what was the item number?
So it was considered a budget adjustment, and it says, if you drop down to the fourth one, that it was approved. And then dropped down to the motion, it was Terry Mines, second by Judy's, and it carried. It was, it has me as an abstain. There was dialogue over whether an abstention in this rare occasion is an affirmative. I requested the information through Richard Coons, which he provided me, the codes. I have concerns about the codes that were provided. The general code that was provided, I believe it's 25003 through 5, in the government code basically allows us as a governing board to have our own rules. But then the second section refers to Sonoma versus Board Supervisors in 1977, where in that specific case that the Dry Creek people voted ahead of time and were instructed that abstention in that case would be an affirmative vote. That put aside, I also have concerns because, Chairman, you actually declared it defeated, and then county council stepped in afterwards with no pre-explanation of that. So these are concerns I have regarding 5.2. And there was other things, but I'll just leave it at that at this time if you want to address things one at a time.
Council?
So the item before the board is approved in the minutes. I believe what you're asking for would be a separate agenda item, and it wasn't agenda is to revisit the vote or discuss the rationale for the vote. What we have to look at when we're looking at the minutes is whether they accurately reflect what occurred at the board meeting. And- And I would request some additional information from you in terms of what you believe is not accurately reflected in the minutes.
That it, that it carried with my abstention. It's a majority vote, and according to the Rosenberg's rules and our government's manual, I do not see how in this, as a majority vote, when you have four people sitting and one not present, you would need all four ayes. I abstained, so it failed. It didn't carry.
So, this is a budget adjustment, requires four this vote, which means it does require four, the four members votes, not three?
Correct, that's what I just said. And I voted in the abstain, which, according to our government's manual and Rosenberg's, would be a no. So you don't get to pass something with three yeses and one no.
Correct. Well, not correct, actually. That has been interpreted by case law, which I did provide to the chair at the time. And I did make it available publicly, provided to the CAO, which talks about these very rare occasions where something is, where a vote requires, fails by one vote, if one of the board members abstains, for the purpose of that vote, it is counted as an aye. I agree with you, it's a very obscure law, which is why I provided the case law for the board to analyze and look at. And I'm happy to provide it again, if that's your pleasure. So ultimately, the board's decision, how you want to proceed. I just provide you with case law and my analysis of it, and it's your decision how you want to vote.
Well, it's interesting how we kind of jump around. So, we're following the rule now, that applies now. However, we did not apply it in the, when it was actually happening in the real time. We were never told ahead of time, number one. Number two, the chair declared it defeated. Then you were going to check into it, and you made the phone call back to us, and then there was a motion. You said that only someone from the majority, and you identified the three people in the majority, and that I was in a minority. So you put me in a minority, but you count my vote as a yes. So then you declare, I can't make a motion. A motion was made, and I wanted to ask a question, but we don't ask questions when there's a motion being made. Then Supervisor Myers had a conversation, and then the motion was withdrawn. So, that procedurally was totally incorrect, and that's okay. So, it's, it's interesting, it's like when we apply the rules and when we don't. And we clearly did not have any advanced knowledge that an abstention would be a no vote, or a yes vote, excuse me, an affirmative vote. No one on the board knew that. I was not the only one that did not know that. So, I feel as you, as county council, were obligated to tell that beforehand, not afterhand, after it was declared done. Again, I go back, this 5.2, motion Terry Myers, second Judy Morris, and it says it carried. An abstain by Chadwick, me, would mean that it didn't carry. So therefore, this is incorrect on, on that word saying carried. That's what I am talking about, right there.
I think it's board's pleasure, I don't make those determination. That information, I do assume you've taken around that training, should have been provided around that training, in terms of how to proceed when we have votes. We can provide another training step, if that would be the board's pleasure on, on the rules and Brown Act and how we apply. What you're specifically looking at is not Rosenberg's rules, it's the rules that were created by the board. And it does say a supervisor who votes on the prevailing side of the question has the right to do a motion to reconsider. Of course, that would require a second and a vote in order for reconsideration to occur. It's the board's pleasure, how you want to interpret it. The prevailing party is typically interpreted as someone who votes in the aye, not someone whose vote is counted as an aye based on the default nature of the legal precedent. However, it's board's pleasure, how you want to proceed. If you guys want to, how you want to proceed, I just give you my opinion on what the law is.
Any other questions before we go to public? Any other questions of council? All right, we'll open it up to the public.
Kate Graves from Lewiston, thank you Supervisor Chadwick for bringing this up. I wish we would have done this when the shenanigans happened, with the, the Hayfork cutout, was in, it was out, it was in. Everything Supervisor Chadwick said and brought up, I agree with. I would say that, I would, I'd like to badly quote what Mike Ware told you guys a while back. Do you know what happens to attorneys that give bad advice? Nothing. Do you know what happens to their clients? Lots of things, bad things even. So that is why your, your so-called county council gives you her opinion, you take it like it's written in stone and it's actually fact. And then she excuses herself from any liability for what she tells you and says it's all up to you. And that's why she does that. Because when you guys get in trouble for it, she'll go, I just gave them my opinion and some advice. I didn't direct them, I didn't make them do anything. Also, I would say that your citing case law is moot, because you don't know what those board's rules were. You know what your rules were. And if you guys want to play games with these things, you do it at your own risk, but you guys should know what you're doing. I know you've dug a really deep hole, and you guys just keep on digging. And I feel bad, kind of bad for you about that, because eventually, it's going to snap. And you guys will be surprised when it happens, and you'll all be pointing fingers. But you guys need to look in the mirror, because you've been told over and over again, and you just keep going. And if you listen with any kind of analysis to what your attorney's saying, and how vague it is and nebulous it is, and it just points you in a direction, if you want to go for that, go ahead. I, I'm not here just nagging you. I mean, it's all, it's our money that this is going to. And we want it done legally, literally legally, following the law. And, and every time you guys dig, you're not paying to get out of this, we are. And I'd like you guys to take that into consideration. Thank you.
No other public comment, we'll come back to the board.
Motion to approve, and as presented.
You recited yourself during that one, you don't have the right to do that.
That's enough.
That's true.
One more time, and we'll ask you to leave, so please, you know the rules, follow them. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask, this is a roll call, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
No.
Supervisor Myers?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? No. It passed. All right, item 2.1. Adopt a resolution which authorizes the clerk recorder assessor to submit a grant, an application for funding to procure information, technology, systems and software, potential grant funding in the amount of $750,000 for the matching the assessor's budget, $375,000. John, you got a question?
My question is, is what is this? There is nothing in the backup talking about this. I understand that the software is getting out of date. I also understand that the assessor, the auditor, and the tasker like to use it, but I don't think that's what this is. The other thing I don't understand is that her budget for 2017-18 for assessor was 335,000 dollars. So she's spending $40,000 more than what her budget is. So either you guys have already decided that she's going to get twice the amount of money for this year's budget, or she's having no operating costs for her office this coming year. So, none of this really makes sense to me, so, you know, I don't know, you guys haven't done the budget hearing yet, so I don't know if you're planning on giving her $600,000 for this office, or actually $700,000 for this office. And I'd like to know what the hardware and software is for $1,125,000.
Okay. All right. Two questions, Shannon, we'll have you, what is, what is the software? We've had this discussion before, but.
Well, the current software that the county is using is Crest. It's a archaic software that's being used. It was originally created for like nine or 10 counties. There's only three counties left on it, very small counties, they're a small mom and pop company. This grant is money that the state has put out, and in my summary, it basically explains that, you know, the state is saying that, you know, the local governments gain by counties being able to have a supply system to be able to accurately and efficiently assess properties. So that's what this grant is for, and it's a two-for-one match, so for every dollar we spend, they give us $2.
Okay. And then I'll go ahead and answer the other part, is that we have passed a preliminary budget, and this money to, to purchase this system, to upgrade it, is in that, this would actually save the county, where it's already budgeted, and we'll go through budget hearings, that $375,000, which would come back to the county. Any other questions? All right. Any other public comment? With hearing done, we'll entertain a motion. But this is a roll call, we'll still need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 2.10, county clerk, clerk recorder assessor as presented. My second.
All right, this is a resolution, please. Roll call.
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Since we have a 10 o'clock public hearing, we are going to go to reports from department heads.
Noel O'Neil from Behavioral Health. Just wanted to update you on two things. One is the contract that you approved this morning with Aegis. That is going to allow Trinity County residents who have Medi-Cal to be able to access methadone treatment down in Redding. So those individuals who may have a battle going on with heroin and have an addiction and need an intervention. In the past, the closest resource was Chico. Aegis was operating there, but they have a hub and spoke model now, where they're offering this service in Redding. Because Trinity County Behavioral Health is a certified provider of drug Medi-Cal services with Department of Healthcare, we are required to provide five services, two of which are medication-assisted treatment. One is the methadone, and the other is a resource for persons who have alcohol kinds of concerns, and that would be naltrexone. So both of those services will be available in Redding at no cost to the beneficiary, although they would have to travel down. That travel can also be arranged through Partnership Health, so that if they call three days ahead of time, they can get that travel taken care of by Partnership Health. The other thing I wanted to update you on is that the ANOVA for No Place Like Home has come out in August, and Trinity County is very interested in responding, hopefully in the first round. We know that, beginning this year, actually, I'm not positive whether it's in 1819 or 1920, the state will begin taking 7% of Mental Health Services Act dollars off the top of that revenue and putting it aside into a trust to pay the bond for No Place Like Home. Small rural counties are guaranteed $500,000 in non-competitive funding, plus $75,000 in technical support. So we've already received the $75,000, and we've used a portion of that for a grant rider, a portion of that we have set aside for A-87 costs, and a portion went to Rural Community Housing Development Corporation, who is an outfit out of Ukiah, who does quite a bit of development for, especially rural counties, for housing. And so, they are working with us to develop a feasibility and financial plan. And if we like their plan down the road, we would come back to you with a contract where they would actually do a development. Additionally, as you know, we also have a MOU with Partnership Health, and they have guaranteed Trinity County $190,000 in housing dollars. So we have a little more than $700,000 to use to work with our CHDC. And our hope is to be able to use that revenue to not only obtain the non-competitive pot, but the competitive RFA will also be coming out, and counties are awarded points for how much revenue they have set aside in their application. And so, it may be that we're going to be able to apply for the competitive element. So, it's a step-by-step process, but I just want to do the note, the NOVA's out, and as a county, we are putting our heads together, the CAO's office, Department of Transportation, Behavioral Health, Health and Human Services, to try to make something happen. Thank you.
Other department heads? Rick, do your split tab report? CPs? We did request that of you at the last meeting, right? Okay. All right. Any other department heads? No? All right, CAO?
I'd love to report this time.
Okay. Members of the board, we'll start with Mr. Myers.
Aye.
Mr. Finley?
Out of county travel, the ninth travel to Chico for Nortec for their executive ordination. That's it.
Supervisor Finley, RCRC.
Oh, yes, I did go to RCRC also.
Okay. Supervisor Chadwick?
I, I joined Supervisor Finley and RCRC, and we also had a go for the Golden State banking stuff. And then on, last week, I don't remember which one, SCUT, which is the Superior California Economic Development, and they came out with a flyer, I would like to, I believe I sent it to Dr. Coons this morning. I'd like to see that distributed throughout. It includes small business loans and a no-fee $5,000 quick response loan for business impacted by the car and Klamath fires. And we are included in this emergency response, so if there's some way that we can distribute this out to the people of Trinity County. So, it would include physical damage, business interruption, if they, people had reduced sales due to the fire. It would help pay rent, payroll, inventory, there's quite a few things that this money can be applied for, so I don't know how to get it out there, so.
Would you feel this is something that we should have a presentation here at the board?
I think it'd be worth our time to do like this, sir. It's just come out. And so, deadlines were spoken of at the meeting, but they weren't clear. So, I'm sure Mr. Nash would send someone, if that's what you request. I, I think it's worth our time.
All right. Ms. Finley, I think that would be appropriate to have that as soon as possible to get a presentation here. I am getting a lot of questions from business people.
And we also asked to look at the theme, too, so.
Right. Yes, that's great. Okay, anything else? Ms. Morris?
No, I had a county travel, but we did have productive collaborative meeting on Friday. I got a quick presentation on what is known as the First 48. It's one of a major project in Supervisor Finley's district that will start moving forward. We'll have a presentation to the board on. We'll have a presentation to the board on that project as well. I don't quite remember the number, but quite a bit of board feet will come out of that project, so, and this is a Six Rivers project, so we'll have Dan in front of us, too.
Fantastic. Little comment on that is hopefully we'll have a road in place and repaired and maintained to get that timber out of there.
Okay.
Yes, it's pretty bad shape.
Rick?
Rick.
I see the head nodding, but, okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I had no Out of County Travel. Do, as the fire cleanup begins, and fortunately, we had more houses that were burnt than we originally thought, so we'll keep working to try to help those lives in the Williston area. All right, on to the state cannabis legislation. Anything new?
Couple of things are moving forward, so nothing has, sorry, John, nothing has been confirmed yet, and I had a footnote, I don't have that in front of me, but some things are well-known to the surface, but we'll see what happens in the next few weeks as the session starts to end.
Okay. Permanent, commercial cannabis ordinance?
As we heard earlier in public comment, the transport, only self-transport issue is in front of the ad hoc, and there has been some changes. I don't know if the application to one of them is up yet. We are investigating both, so if there's changes or modifications that need to happen, you'll see it in front of the board.
And we also have updated versions of the cultivation ordinance, hopefully going to the PC SIM.
Right, oh, thank you.
Right.
Those amendments we discussed to manufacture, for manufacturing, I believe it was the last board meeting, are slated to go to the PC, I think the first meeting in September. Yep, Leslie's shaking her head, she's, yep, so those amendments that we set to be looked at at the PC will be in front of them in September.
Okay.
And then, so cleanup and cultivation, as you pointed out, Supervisor Groves, transport-only self-transport, and then eventually, after that, we will be tackling retail.
All right, new jail, detention, anything?
I have to deal, still on track from last time I recorded.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Why did you say those bids were going out?
I prefer that to a rig there going out.
Okay, COP refinancing, anything new?
No, Terry's not here, so I can report on that.
Budget development?
All the narratives are in from the department, say they've submitted them, Caesar will be working on that to get them to me later this week or early next week, and we're on track for our big September budget hearing.
And wilderness oversight, we will discuss that later.
I have a quick question for CAO. Supervisor Groves alluded to it, as well as Supervisor Chadwick, and the item she raised, contributing to this, the business downturn that we're experiencing from the fires. It's not our first fire, it's not our first road issue, and county businesses have certainly taken a hit over quite a few years. CAO, could you bring to us, and of course, we're dealing with the smoke that is suffocating the region, if not the whole West Coast. Can you look into, maybe this is an OES question, what acres were considered not directly from the wildfire, but from what is known as fire operations or back burning, not to be confused with preventative proactive prescribed burning, which is helpful, and sometimes back burning is necessary, but I'd like to know what gets recorded in the media is total acreage. We don't know what is considered part of the back burn acreage versus complete just straight forward wildfire.
Okay, so it's clarified, so you want to differentiate between what nature...
Yes.
...consumed and what...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. It's not getting reported that way, and it typically doesn't, but a lot of the smoke tends to be, from what I understand, from that, and they cut a real wide box when they want to go throw some additional fire to the issue, so...
Yes. I'd like to find out where it's...
Thank you.
All right, that, we have a 10 o'clock public hearing. We will take a break until 10:02. All right, we're back in session, 10 o'clock public hearing, it is 10:02. Planning and zoning, item 3.1, adopt a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning planning file P-17-46, Wood, regarding APN 008-130-10 in the Salier area. Number one, adopt a mitigated negative declaration, finding on the basis of the whole record before the board, including the initial study and comments received, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment, and that the mitigated negative deck reflects the board's independent judgment analysis. And introduce, waive the reading of and enact an ordinance, amend in Trinity County zoning Orange 315 by rezoning APN 008-130-01 from unclassified to agriculture, 40 acre minimum size, and approve the use permit to authorize the establishment and operation of a six-guest-room bed and breakfast facility, small conference room, employee housing, two outdoor kitchens in an agricultural building, finding the action to be consistent with the overall goals and policies of the Trinity County planning, general plan. Trinity County Planning Commission recommended approval, fiscal impact unknown. Listen.
Good morning. And like you just said, we are asking you to adopt the mitigated negative deck as attached, and waive the reading of and enact the ordinance, amend the zoning ordinance to change a partial from unclassified to ag, 40 acre minimum. So the advocate is not present here today, nor is their agent, and they were present at the Planning Commission meeting when this item appeared, the Planning Commission approved it unanimously. Currently, the uses in this area to the north are TPZ, and to the south, it is also TPZ. They have a number of buildings that are currently on-site, but they are looking at eventually doing a build-out to add additional buildings so that they can do their bed and breakfast and have a conference room facility. They have conditions of approval associated with their use permit, so any of those buildings that would be developed would need to get the necessary permits and get clearance before they were allowed to use them, associated with the bed and breakfast. So do you have any questions?
Okay, we'll open it up to the public, any public comment on item 3.1?
Jake, rest for Chris Taford. They have a number of questions. Really excited to hear that somebody's getting an ag building, that's cool, I didn't know we did those in Trinity County, they must not be producing cannabis. I'm also curious how this CUP, this rezone, all of this has been done so efficiently, and the timeframe that this was submitted and put in. My wife's CUP should have been heard in June. From everything that I hear about this, I don't know the owners of this property, I don't know anything about it except for what you guys have put out, but this sounds like a pop-farm. Employee housing, outdoor kitchens, ag buildings, conference rooms, sounds like a perfect pop-farm. Now, I know a number of people in this room, including one of our esteemed supervisors, that's been trying to deal with CUPs, rezones, building modifications, ag buildings, all of these things, that is still just getting stonewalled. I'm not here to try to interrupt a business in Salier by any means, I just want us all to take a serious look in the mirror at, wow, a business that doesn't have a cannabis leaf stamped on it, just went through the exact same process that so many of us are struggling to go through, in a very short period of time, with a unanimous vote for planning, with the staff approval on it. Quite frankly, if you were to put this description we just heard in a real estate ad, and maybe say 10,000 square foot garden, you would have a phenomenal turnkey cannabis business. If this went through like that, none of ours. We can't even get a report on the CUPs from Rick Tip that was requested from the board.
Any other public comment? All right, that would bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Is there any motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the planning...
Go ahead, and we'll do this at two, we'll do this in two sections, we'll do the negative deck first, so go ahead and just read that, number one.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt mitigated negative declaration, finding that on the basis of the whole record before the board, including the initial study and comments received, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment, and that the mitigated negative declaration will reflect the board's independent judgment and analysis, and...
Second. Go ahead. Ms. Chadwick, we'll give it to Ms. Chadwick.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Myers?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Okay. So the other part, just...
Okay, I make another motion to adopt 3.1, item number two, to introduce and waive the reading and enact the ordinance, amend Trinity County's ordinance, number 315, by rezoning APN 008-130-01 from unclassified to agriculture, 40 acre minimum lot size, approve a use permit to authorize the establishment and operation of a six-guest bedroom and breakfast facility, small conference room, employee housing, two outdoor kitchens in an agricultural building, finding the action to be consistent with the overall goals and policies of the Trinity County General Plan.
Second. A separate motion of that?
Yes, that is a separate motion.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Myers?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
All right, on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department, a member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be heard out of order. I am going to flop the orders because 5.1 may take a little longer, and we'll want to get resources, people out of here, so we're going to do 5.2 first. So with that, 5.2, approve the modified title change for job descriptions for the Sheriff's Department Jail Division following positions, Correctional Officer 1, 2, and 3, and Correctional Sergeant to the new titles, Correctional Deputy Sheriff Dispatcher 1, 2, or 3, and Correctional Deputy Sheriff Sergeant, and modify the allocation list for the Sheriff's Department Jail Division by replacing said titles effective August 2018, and direct said changes be made to the allocation listing.
Charlie's not here today, so if you ask, I go ahead and take this, and then we have a sheriff's staff here that can answer your questions regarding the changes. Essentially, it is a title change. In theory, it allows better use of staff, it allows for situations like we just had, if we need additional officers on the street, that they will be able to actually go out on the street, because I mean deputies opposed to COs or COs have powers of arrest, and I'll let you explain that at 8:32 a little better than I can, but they have more authority than just jail duties.
So, Ryan Lynn, Joe Commander, I can be aware as taking over the facility about eight months ago, that the staff is actually outlying, out of staff, the state of California, as far as the kill goes, and the SEC goes, Florida State of Indian Corrections. So therefore, submitted papers to the CAO and Sheriff stating these deficiencies, and that they need to be corrected. Basically, the only thing we're asking for is basically a recognition of something that would have happened in 2013, where several counties went to correctional deputy versus correctional officer. There's a movement away from the correctional officer to correctional deputy in the state of California, because they like, they like some more, they like to define it better than the P.O. So therefore, I submitted this, and help HR correct some of the job titles, which we're submitting for. Are there any questions I can address?
I do. So when it comes to hiring, is it a higher threshold in terms of what the requirement is in terms of training?
No, ma'am, it's not. The regents will be the same. The title will change basically for legal reasons, but we will still maintain the same level, and same level type of group we need now will be the same.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll open up to the public, any questions from the public? All right, we'll come back, entertain a motion.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. All right, item 5.1, discuss or take action to determine Wilderness Ad hoc Committees and Trinity County's position on Congressman Huffman's bill, H.R. 6596 Northwest California Wilderness Recreation and Working Forest Act. So this is going to be, the, this bill has been submitted with some minor changes from the original bill. Supervisor Finley and I had met with the congressman and other parts of his group to discuss this. He has requested us a letter of support. I don't know the feelings of the rest of the board on this item, and where it came from, or, not where it came from, but what they feel about what we should do here. I know there's large impacts in most everybody's districts, Supervisor Myers has large impacts at Salier, I do, or actually, I have less now, and Supervisor Chadwick has large impacts in her district, so this is meant to be a little more workshop-y than we normally do here, so I asked everybody to do their homework and read the act, and come up with changes or thoughts that they had, and what I see the options today is, or in the future on this, is that we send no letter and stay neutral in the fact, we send a letter opposing it outright, and, or we send a letter saying that we think it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, or we send a letter saying we could support, but here are the five or 30 changes we'd like to see before we could give our full support. So with that, are there any questions from the board about what our process is going to be? We'll open up the public first, and then we'll come back and have discussion here.
Are we getting any type of formal presentation from the board?
We've had presentat, no, we are not, we've had presentation, the bill has been submitted...
But to the board, today?
No, not today, no. Yes.
I've had a... I've had requests from various constituents throughout District Five who would like to see a little bit more input and notice of the meeting. Most of them found out about it on Friday, even though you did announce it two weeks ago that this would be coming up. So they have requested that no decision be made on this board's part and that another workshop happened, maybe a special meeting, that type of thing. So it's a request.
I wouldn't be opposed to us taking input, bringing in, getting concepts, and then possibly you and I going down county and doing workshop, is that?
If there's money to do it, sure. Sounds like a great plan.
I would like a formal presentation with the board at some point.
I mean, we've had.
That's, I thought we had one.
Two. We've had two.
To the board?
Yes.
Officially?
Well, John Driscoll is official. This is a pretty loosey-goosey group that.
Watch out, one of them's in the audience.
That's okay. That, I mean, there's not like an official team that's going to fly out from Washington and give us.
No, no, I just would like someone from their staff to be able to answer questions if they come up today.
Okay, I mean, the bill's here. We can look at that, we can discuss that about a workshop.
Thank you for considering that.
And this has also, you know, been publicly vetted in town and through the collaborative. There was a, you know, public shop. So it's, to me, it's our time for us to gather what the public thinks of this and then as the elected officials, we can represent to Washington what we feel needs to be done. So any other questions?
I would also like to request that we have public workshops. That's been the most consistent thing I have heard. It is a long, I mean, it's pretty long and I did not find a map, so I think that there are more questions than that, and the opinions of the constituents need to be heard before any final, so I concur, we need to walk workshops.
Okay. Any other thoughts? With that, we'll open up to the public, take comments on.
This isn't your map.
That's actually not the newest one.
Well, it's not, but it was the only one that was on the site.
But it's close enough.
Close enough, thank you.
Diane, before you start, I will point out to the board, just looking at this map, the zones along, north end of Trinity Lake, that is no longer brown, and the little brown zones on the Trinity Lake side that are against the wilderness are no longer, and besides that, the map will be the same.
Dark, red, brown?
Yeah, the dark, red, brown represents the wilderness and the one just on the north end, the Bonanza King, has been taken out and their little buffer ones along which are hard to see from here are taken out. Everything else is exactly the same. Thank you for bringing that in, Miss Sheen.
You're welcome. So I'm here to give you the informal public opinion from, as taken over at the Trinity County Fair, and I also had already presented these to the collaborative on Friday. And anyway, I will, can I give this to Tina? So this is not good for our county and I would like to say to you not to give a letter of support, and I will confirm to Kay and possibly John.
Kay Graves from Liston. This is, once again, we have people with their self-interests forcing it on others. And I don't know, I know that I see a few here today that have come in for this, but we have environmental corporations, we have lobbyists, we have special interests, and they put together a little package and they gave it to a representative who can barely find us on a map, who's taking almost all of it from Trinity County. And I don't want you to give them a "we don't like this" letter. I would like you to give them, "We don't like this letter and you won't be taking any of this from Trinity County." For the same reason you had it removed from around Trinity Center. We don't want it anywhere. We don't need more wilderness areas. We don't need more areas that when they catch on fire, you can't use a chainsaw or a helicopter without getting special permission while it burns. As far as our creeks go, I don't know about you guys, but I drink water and I like to drink water that I have rights to and my paring rights to without them being taken by the government because I don't have money to sue the government. I don't have tens of thousands of dollars to fight for what I already own. Our problem is if you, I mean, all you have to do is look at the California Constitution to see that Jerry Brown in his second term already turned our water into literally a franchise. And if you don't believe me, go read the 10th Amendment in the Constitution. Every drop of water we have is regulated. Why do we need to add it to the Wild and Scenic River Act when, if you read that act, it actually states that problems caused by including these in the act will be mitigated after they're included? What the bleep? They should be mitigated before. They should be brought up before. They're going to do it to us and then they're going to tell us why it's great for us. They're going to ignore us and they're going to pat us on the head. And this won't be the first time this has happened. Go look at, you know, so-called Clearangle Lake. Look at the history of that. We should learn, you know, we've been messed over by lawyers and such since the federal government took the forest reserve and we just don't seem to learn our lesson. I'm glad you took out Bonanza King and the buffer area, but for the same reason you did that and more, there shouldn't be any of this. I mean, it reads like a special interests group in Trinity County. Jared Huffman knows nothing about this. When he gave a presentation on it, he couldn't point anything on the map. And as far as the map goes, they're new and improved map. It's simply a map and you press your cursor and you get a drop box. You move it a millimeter and you get a drop box. It's useless. You can't find stuff on it. You have to already know it's there. You can't print it. It's as useless as this entire thing and it's as hidden as this is. And please just tell them no. Tell them no, not, "We don't like it." Tell them no. Thank you.
Come on, more people.
Good morning. My name is Mike Rourke. I'm currently a rancher in Hayford, New York. House Resolution 6596 offered by Mr. Huffman entered into the record. I would like to agree with what's been said about the map. I have yet to find one. I know there was a copy published in the paper that you can't find every little segment of the proposed Wild and Scenic Rivers on that because some of them are so small. But I'm opposed to this bill and would urge the board to do it. Everything in their power to see that it fails. And that's not taking no stance, that's taking a stance, an active stance for the people of Trinity County. This bill is way too big and attempts to be all things to too many groups instead of focusing on a few concerns. And I think that there are some concerns that we have in our county in terms of natural resource management and recreation in particular, and pot farms on national forests. All of these have been concerns around for one time, but there's nothing in this bill that's going to specifically address them or fund that. So we're going to create all this bureaucracy within our federal entities without any, that are already having a hard time managing our forests with the goals that have been set out for them. This is going to complicate things and make things total chaos. I'm especially concerned about the creation of South Fork because of the Trinity/Mad River Special Restoration Area. I'm not sure what kind of an acronym that's going to create. 700,000 acres, most of Supervisor Bentley's area down there and my area, and the South Fork Wilderness Area included on top of that, which is another 26,400 acres, and then the designation of the South Fork and its tributaries as Wild and Scenic/Recreational Rivers. This will directly affect our family's historic grazing allotment on the South Fork Mountain and other allotments in the proposed management areas. The language in the bill states that these allotments will be grandfathered in, and I had conversations in the language that they were trying to do beforehand, and grandfathering is not a fail-safe thing, particularly when you set up standards within the act itself that are totally against current operating standards and contrary to current operating standards within the Forest Service regarding grazing allotments and other recreational management. This will cause the end of our family's sixth generation cattle enterprise as our enterprise is dependent on the forage and the cattle's ability to access that forage, which is a bigger issue that's available for our allotment. And one of those being the goal of continued decommissioning of unneeded and unauthorized roads.
I'm going to allow more time because we're in a workshop situation.
Absolutely right. These unnecessary or unneeded roads, which aren't defined, who defines what unneeded is unauthorized roads. We've been through this process before in that there's a bunch of roads that, if I look at maps back from when I was in high school and before, that had Forest Service numbers on them that magically became unauthorized in the Forest Service's road management designation. That was their way of eliminating them for management purposes. The Wild and Scenic Rivers Act, Section 6A through 6C, allows for the condemnation of private lands within the proposed reaches of the public access for public access and the ability to traverse these sections of designated property. I'm not sure that most residents of Trinity County are aware of that. That's a big concern to me and their ability to condemn properties is only limited by their ability to get access funds to do so, so maybe it won't actually happen because there's no funding in this. 300 miles, I believe, is overreaching. 10 new wilderness areas is overreaching. Focus on what we need. Throw this thing back at them and tell them, if you are concerned about helping us in Trinity County, Mr. Huffman, then come and sit down with us in Trinity County and ask what our major objectives are. Thank you.
Good morning, Larry Winter from Heimpong. I have some maps I'd like to share with you for an issue I'm going to discuss in just a second. If I can hand them off?
Yes, hand them to Tina, please.
So what I, I brought up wilderness areas in the past, but this time I'm going to just focus on the South Fork Mad River forest rework that they have in this bill. And I have some issues here that I hope that the board will be able to answer their constituents before they accept what this bill is on. The first thing I want to bring up is that in the case of the Forest Service, this bill will mandate that they'll prioritize restoration of the restoration area over other non-emergency vegetation management projects on the Six River and the Shasta Trinity National Forests. And so I'm reading that the rest of Trinity County is out of luck, that anything that happens in that area will get top priority over the whole Shasta Trinity, the west east side also. And so that, to me, is a red flag for you. For me, it's wonderful because I live in that area, but it's not right. We're now going to start looking at a master stewardship program that I hope we can incorporate the whole county so that priorities are based on need and safety. Another item, which has been a controversial item in Trinity County for a decade at least, and here it's going to be mandated that for wildland fire practices, for the Forest Service when we had wildland fires, a priority for the secretary shall be used prescribed burning and wildland fire to the extent practicable to achieve the purposes of this section. So that means they will now be able to manage wildfires in August to achieve their objectives. And so there's a big push nationally to start doing that, but we need to be, Shasta Trinity doesn't allow that right now. We need to be very careful on how that plays out. Right now, the way this is written, it would make it a law that they can do that and we have no idea how that would be practiced. Okay, and then concerning the maps and also concerning our ability to comment on this in the past, I have a copy of the bill as of June 14th that says that shaded fuel break projects will be a network of shaded fuel breaks in strategic locations within the wildland urban interface. Something that I commented on when Jeff came and presented this to me a year and a half ago, how I like that. The new language, just within, since June 14th and when it's been put before Congress on page 10, additional requirements shaded fuel breaks. The secretary shall prioritize the establishment of a network of shaded fuel breaks within the portions of the wildland urban interface over within 150 feet of residences, private property, and then also long road sides showing, you know, 150 feet on either side. And that has now made it one of the top priorities. And the reason why I gave you that map, the top map and the second page, in the Heimpong, Fire State Council's been working, we're a collaborative group also, we've been working with the Forest Service, we've had this program, we've been on a program and worked for five years, and this is initial planning, so it's still going to be worked on. But we have 14,500 acres. The second page shows what is broken down in unit numbers. The third page is showing first 48 project in Ruth, and that's a roadside shaded fuel break project. And I want you to see the difference of how much more comprehensive, integrated that the Heimpong project's going to be versus what solely roadside shaded fuel break project, which is this bill is prioritizing. And it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't written this way for the public to comment on. It was just inserted into the bill when it was showing something different. And I'm going to, you know, so I guess my main concern is that fire, well, this expresses it well. CWPP isn't mentioned once in this bill that I've found, and to me, that says a lot. And it's such an important issue for people here in Trinity County.
For the record, could you tell us the acronym?
Community wildfire protection plans. And also roadside shaded fuel breaks is just a prescription, a tool you use to help the community become fire resilient, and they're prioritizing the tool as opposed to prioritizing what needs to be done. And then you use the tools where it fits and how the different tools can work together. You'll see we have broadcast burns, we have a bunch of different stuff in there. Broadcast burns are for, take advantage of the 2015 fires where the fuel's been reduced, we can get in there and keep the fuels down if we get there in time, which is critical. we can get in there and keep the fuels down if we get there in time, which is critical. And another thing about the roadside shaded fuel break is that it stipulates a 300-foot wide path when we just approved a roadside shaded fuel break project in Xenia that's going to go to 600 feet based on the issues on ground. This is going to stay only 300 feet. And then the last thing, which I really don't get and I hope you'll be able to figure it out, is that the multi-party monitoring, they'll use a multi-party monitoring, evaluation and accountability process to assess the positive or negative ecological, social and economic effects of restoration projects within the restoration area. And that'll be, that group will be in collaboration with the Secretary of Agriculture, Secretary of Interior and interested persons. Who are these interested persons? And the power that they will have besides just evaluating is that they'll be able to incorporate the monitoring results into the management of the restoration area. And so this bill allows for using collaborative groups to help design a project, but it's instigating things from this bill saying, these are your priorities. And then it also has another multi-party monitoring group that will say, we don't like what you've done, you need to change it. And to me, that's just taking more of our voice away from local communities.
Do you have the section number of the multi, do you have in the bill where that's at?
On the multi-party?
Yeah.
It's at...
That's okay, I can find it.
It's I under, under plantations, riparian, oh, compliance, right after stewardship contracts, it's in there, just like towards the end, just before the Redwood National and State Park restoration.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Clarence Rose and I'm very unfamiliar with standing at this lectern without a three-minute limit, but I'll see if I can handle it. So I urge you to consider this bill dead on arrival and my basic objection, and I have some other comments to make, my basic objection is the same one I raised two years ago when several of us met in a local conference room with representatives of this bill and I said to them at the time, and it's still absolutely true, that this is as asymmetric of a situation as a bill could set up in terms of the impact on us. So what do I mean by asymmetric? All that we need to do to create more wilderness, new areas and extensions of old ones is to sign a piece of paper. And by virtue of that having been done, that becomes law and those lands are withdrawn from the possibility of active forest management and they're withdrawn from the possibility of more access being created that could help us with our wildfire problem. It's all gone with a stroke of the pen. Meanwhile, the forest management activities that are promised in this bill, we know from experience, it's a very long tedious process that people invest a lot of time in and when you get to the end of it, the forest management doesn't happen. So, as a modest proposal, I would suggest that if we do anything about this bill, we might say to the proponents, and I wish they would adopt this position, that you get the forest management work accomplished and then come back and ask us for more wilderness. I don't think that's an unreasonable approach. The way it stands now, the forest management measures, related activities are carrots, which are actually a mirage. They're carrots meant to entice us into buying into this bill so that the wilderness additions can be made without any substance behind the notion that this management is actually going to happen. And I want to talk about the collaborative for a minute because it has come up as a topic. Mr. Chairman, you referenced that we had a workshop. I, my characterization would be different. We had a, we had a presentation in June from a proponent of the bill and it was basically a presentation by an advocate. And I remember saying at that workshop, in the spirit of collaboration, where people have come together who oftentimes have radically different viewpoints, would have learned how to work together in the area where our viewpoints overlap, my suggestion was that the collaborative look at this bill piece by piece and any place in the bill where we could find consensus, we would indicate that. And any place where we could not find consensus, which is defined in the collaborative as 80% support, those areas where we cannot find consensus, we would not deal with. So we would hand the bill back, say, these are the items that we agree about, that we have consensus, the rest of it, we don't touch. I want to close by, oh, let me mention something about Larry Winter's comment on fire as a management tool. That concept came out a while back and some astute people said, well, this is the government trying to use fire to manage vegetation without doing any NEPA. And it's absolutely true. Where else does the federal land manager have the chance to change the characteristic of a big area of land without any public review, any environmental review? That is it. I also want to comment, well, so we've made a big box in the car fire and I'm as concerned about that as anybody else, but I have to say this. When you look at the car fire map, the operation maps, you see miles and miles and miles of constructed containment lines that were burnt right through. And finally, the agency said, we've got to back away far enough and burn out enough that we can control this under. And so we need to think about fire as a management tool and the lack of NEPA when it happens and we're in a real conundrum here, but this bill doesn't help us. In my opinion, this is a wilderness bill which is designed to attract support or be less unpalatable by proposing activities which will be good for the environment and the economy of Trinity County, but are not any more likely to take place as a result of this bill becoming law. Meanwhile, we will be burdened by a huge increase in acres lacking ground access or forest management, both of which are necessary to reduce and mitigate the effects of stand replacing, community threatening wildfire. Thank you.
You might have already answered this, Clarence. Speaking of the collaborative, I know it was a discussion, everyone's been pretty frustrated with a certain side of the forest versus Six Rivers and Shasta-Trinity.
That's true.
And we heard that Friday at the collaborative. Do you, and you might have already touched upon this, but do you get the sense that some of the restoration that is pointed out in this bill would kind of force that side of the Forest Service to actually get some stuff done that we've all been kind of frustrated about or not so much?
You know, I don't see legislation forcing the Forest Service to do anything beyond what they have been doing and unit by unit. So some forests have taken a pro collaboration, let's get some good work done out there and other forests have taken a position where it appears to me, I'm biased of course, but it appears to me that they're trying to preserve their own institution and that's their highest objective above all others. So I'm personally familiar with a situation where legislation was passed which was intended to cause the Forest Service to take a certain course of action and we're four years down the road from that legislation and we're still not through the process that they erected to do. So I don't have any more hope for this on a macro scale as I do for that on a small basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, I'm Tom Walz with Sierra Pacific Industries. First want to say, we need to recognize that Congressman Huffman is a really smart guy and he represents his constituents really well. And the constituents that I think he was focused on when he agreed to develop this proposal was his urban constituents, his environmental constituents and those people that would be likely to continue voting for him while not costing him anything. And I think this bill is very smart on his part because really if you think about it, you take this to Congress and you have all the east coast congressmen saying, oh, more wilderness in California, yeah, screw them, let's, yeah, let's put more wilderness in California, let it burn more around. So there's going to be a lot of support for it. I think this bill, it might not pass under this administration, but in change the House of Representatives in November, it has probably a pretty good chance of passing. And our president probably would sign it because it's going to hurt California and he loves to hurt California. So I think there's a really, really good chance that this bill's going to pass. So this Board of Supervisors has an opportunity right now to say, okay, if the bill's going to pass, let it pass, but let's exclude everything in Trinity County. Have the bill go forward as it is, but just exclude any of the proposed activities in Trinity County. And I would think that would set the tone to say, our county is concerned. If you want to have a case by case analysis of each proposal under this congressional thing, then come to Trinity County, let's sit down, we'll look, we'll map each piece out, say what's the advantages, what's the disadvantages. But in the meantime, his proposal can go forward and, you know, the east coast congressional representatives can go ahead and screw California and Del Norte and Mendocino and Lake County can take the hit, but I don't think Trinity County has to. So that would be my suggestion. When you have more workshops or whatever you might do, I would just say, Congressman, you are a very smart man and his representative, I talked to John, John's very listened to a lot of our concerns, but it doesn't get to the point that Trinity County is going to be dramatically affected by this. I mean, every time you add more acres that are inaccessible or difficult to get to, you just have more summer months of a fire going that isn't going to be attempted to slow it down or back off or anything. We already have smoke in Trinity County for two months out of the year, we'll have it for five months out of the year, six months out of the year because once something starts, there's no incentive in an unroded or wilderness area to do anything about it other than let it burn until it gets to a road or a major access point where you can fight it. So I would, I would think this is going to have major impacts on people's ability to breathe in Trinity County and our recreational. Who wants to come to a smoky county to sit on a lake covered in smoke? Ask our, our houseboats how many rentals they lost over the past month with a car fire. So I think there's a lot of disincentive to have this bill for Trinity County. If, if you're supportive of the bill, and I, I think a lot of people in this county might be supportive of the bill, let's say, okay, we support it, but just take Trinity County, anything associated with Trinity County out of it. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm John Briscoe with Congressman Jared Huffman's office. Apologize for getting here a little bit late and multiple traffic stops along the way. I had, I was hoping that I would be able to make a presentation today. I just found out about this item on the agenda yesterday, so wasn't able to put together something that could be comprehensive for your, for your consideration here. And I guess that's what I would ask is if the board is going to take a position on this bill, I'd really like to be able to come here and give an actual presentation on the genesis of the bill and how it, how it developed, all the public comment that we did take, all the meetings that we had in the northern part of the district on that and the comments that we took into consideration, the changes that we made, a number of which you're familiar with, of course. So, you know, we have tried to be extremely responsive to everybody in this, in these discussions around this bill and I just would ask that if you're going to take a position on the bill, you allow us to be able to come and make a presentation to the board, be able to answer your questions. I am here to answer whatever questions I can today, so if you do have questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer those and if I can't right away, I'll get back to you for sure. So you can do that now or we can, you can call me up when you like.
I think, thank you very much for coming first because you can see the constituents are very, very concerned. They have a lot of very serious questions, a lot of knowledge. I mean, Mr. Walz just came up here, heard a lot of people here, Mr. Rose, a lot of people with very serious concerns and they're going to bring to us. And I think meeting here, discussing this to us is one thing, but I think we need to do an open workshop for the county where you come in and explain this because we're, you can see each one of us is going to get a margin. I don't hear a lot of positives, I hear a lot of negatives and for your ability to change people's views or minds or put things at rest or whatever, I think this is, you know, to this little room, I almost think you need to make this more available for the entire public because I know they want to do workshops. I don't know how you do that, but maybe you do an evening thing where people aren't at work, maybe you come up for a couple hours at the Performing Arts Center or somewhere and do something. I don't know, it just seems like this is a really, really big issue. Fires have never been more effective, I mean affecting of this area. We've had two years here where the entire county is just destroyed by fire. We've had about eight years of economic damage from, or maybe up to 10 from when the roads shut down at Buckhorn and so there's just been this nonstop economic problem and I just think that for, you've sat here a little bit and heard what we're listening to, I think it needs your addressing for sure.
Sure, and I, and, you know, I think we can be happy to do that. Again, we did do, we did do public meetings last year on the issue and talking with people ever since then, meeting with different groups that had concerns over that. So this certainly is not happening in a vacuum. As a matter of fact, it's one of the more public processes that I've, I've seen. And I guess that's, you know, what I'm calling for here, I guess, is, is, you know, the ability to have, you know, one of the congressman's representatives come and actually make a presentation for the board before actually they take a position on it is what I would hope. So I'm all for that. Like I said, I just found out about this agenda item yesterday, so wasn't able to put that together overnight.
John?
I understand Congressman was in Ruth and Hayford reviewing this or taking this into consideration recently?
We were there looking at the first 48 collaborative fuel break projects, so.
Thank you. Keep in mind that Trinity County is made up of several, just a few communities and they're not going to drive to Weaverville or even Hayford to sit through a presentation. It's, you know, anywhere from one and a half to two hours to three hours.
Right.
One way. You might want to take that on and work it that way and reach out to constituents.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate that suggestion for sure.
We haven't seen much of you here regarding this and I guess that's why we haven't been that inclusive. I apologize.
So, John, we will at some point ask you back to give another, you've already given presentations to the board in the past.
I know, I know, I'm directed at the board, but yeah.
I'm not sure if you're the one, but yes, we've had presentations, but this is, the bill has changed and evolved, so we will do that. This basically is now, we're in a kind of fact finding part of this in the community and that's why you've been asked to give a presentation at this time, but we will definitely take that into consideration before we do anything else.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
A couple of questions have come up.
How about we let the rest of the public talk and then we can bring John back up if there was questions that he's... if there was questions that he's noted along the way he wants to answer.
Thank you, Charlie, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Morris. Now Weaverville again, for the moment, anyway. You know, I think, I think a lot of the speakers raised some great issues, and I think that, not to speak for John, a congressman, but I, I think they're definitely, you know, they want to hear those and they, they want to take those into consideration. A lot of the ideas in this were actually spawned from local folks within the region, some from Trinity County, some from, from other counties, obviously, since it's a multi-county proposal. The other note I would make is that similar to John not being aware of this meeting, I think you're also not seeing some folks here who may not follow the Board of Supervisors' agenda from week to week. So there's, you know, fishing guides that support many of the measures here, there's local business owners. So I think deferring this to another session that's more well-publicized, I think you'll probably get a larger breadth of input for those meetings, so I would support that for sure. Thank you.
Craig Gordon, Weaverville. I would encourage you to support this bill. As recently pointed out by many prominent economists during the bears' ears National Monument controversy, long-term economic viability lies with outdoor recreation and ecotourism in particular. And getting to live in Trinity County is basically a gift from the rest of the taxpayers in California, because our, our budget shortfalls. And letting a few local interests, you know, people that raise beef, I mean, their interests, they don't, you know, long-term economic viability, you don't want to, a rising tide lifts all ships, you know? One or two beef concerns that are family legacies, doesn't really matter in the broader scheme of things. And that sounds harsh. Also, in terms of fire mitigation, many years now during the fall and during the spring, there have been many controlled burns all around the Whiskey Town area, and it's still burned. And as pointed out by the gentleman, it required a new tactic where they pulled back and built bigger fire lanes, to which access isn't really a concern with that new strategy. Because if you're going to pull back, you'll be pulling back out of the wilderness where there already is established access. And you can do your burnouts from there, and it will meet the fire that's already in the wilderness. So it's really a moot point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm DeSantis, Trinity River Hunger Company. So I'm here to represent the mill, but also myself. Certainly, this bill has been around and we've, Congressman Huffman has spent a lot of time trying to have us involved in this with John Driscoll and his staff and Wilderness Society. We've had meetings for, back over the last year at the mill, dealing with this particular bill. Congressman and John was here recently and then with me in the office. Wasn't one of my finer days. Congressman pretty well got both barrels. But reality, it's asinine. And we watch what's happening across our state right now. And if you really want to go enjoy the wilderness, I suggest you go to the Snow Mountain Wilderness in the Mendocino Fire this fall and take a walk. It'll be really nice, because it burned here recently in the Mendocino Fire. Big chunk of it did. We're missing the whole point here. There's always ground out, the ground out there that somebody wants to lock up. And certainly as a county having half a million acres or what it is in wilderness at the current time, you can see how good our management's been of that in the last 30 years. Look at what our trail system is today, or where it was 25 or 30 years ago. Essentially, the management was one downhill drastically, just like it has of the National Forest. Mike Work brought up the road systems, and we continue to eliminate these road systems. We continue to lose fire protection. You know, yes, we had controlled burns in Whiskey Town. Not going to get into that situation with a car fire. But a lot of the people that, yes, they're smart, but they just don't have it figured out on how to protect what God has given us here. If we'd have gotten aggressive with the car fire, it might have been a different outcome. But I'm going to leave that with you. So if you look at this bill and you look at wilderness, we have a lot of wilderness. I challenge you as a board to send a letter of no support. I think you'll find very few pieces in this legislation that are proposed for wilderness. There are, you know, nothing other than, sure, there's some great pieces of ground out there, they do not come close to being what the Trinity Alps is at all. Some of them are just rock piles and hot and miserable, because people want to lock them up. Some of them are great timber stands, and I'm not saying that we don't put them in wilderness so we can manage them, but the reality is, one of the questions a congressman asked me is, well, what's the, what's the difference? What do you think's going to happen? Because most of these are roadless areas. Big chunk of them are. I said, well, I don't think anything's going to happen, I think they'll remain roadless. So what's the difference if we put them in wilderness? The difference is, we continue to lock ourselves out of any management decisions. So if you look at the management of our National Forest in Trinity County, when President Clinton, you know, swept the country with the owl decisions, and we created all the owl set sides, he curated an AMA and AFORC, an adaptive management area, and gave the Forest Service the authority to try all kinds of new management schemes there. And have they done that? Zero. They have done nothing there since that decision was made, and how many years ago was that? When Clinton was in office? A few. If you're going to do something, board, push the Forest Service into making some decisions and doing some work. Yes, we had issues on the west side of the Shasta Trinity. Basically, it's an accountability issue. And I don't want to get off on that, but, you know, the management that is proposed in this bill is nothing more than they have the capability of doing right now currently. Same way with marijuana. If you want to get serious about things, go out there and do your job. We're not doing it. Forest Service isn't doing it because nobody holds them accountable. I really encourage you to send a letter of no support. Have your hearings if you want, have your hearings, but none of this makes any sense. We're in the middle of a disaster when it comes to forest management on wildfire. Yes, we have terrible conditions right now. And you get the wrong, these type of conditions, and you get the wrong wind and, and hot temperatures, anything's going to burn. Even well-managed ground. But without doing any management, we're guaranteed it's going to burn. We get the right conditions, it'll burn the whole county up. You know, West Reading's a bomb waiting to go off for 20 years. Nobody would do anything about that. Was it National Forest? No. But we've got the same conditions here, and we continue, year after year after year, making it worse and worse. Whether it comes to Mike Work's cows grazing, we just continue to eliminate the things that helped, that helps vegetation management, and we're doing nothing. And in doing that, we could support a lot of jobs in our communities. So just one quick point about this that really bugs me, is they recommend in this bill to put a recreation office in the county here, and I think it's Senator Weaverville. Not sure. I challenge the congressman, you already have a National Forest District Rangership, our Rangers Office sitting here that's doing very little. Why in the world are you building another government office to employ more people? And go out to the lake right now and see how many people are recreating here? Just about zero. Cedar Stock told me this morning, they have one houseful reserved for Liberty. So you need to make some decisions, you need to move forward, you need to be aggressive. Thank you.
Members of the board, my name's Dick Morris. I live here in Weaverville. Few families in Trinity County have worked harder to support wilderness than ours in the establishment of the Trinity Alps Wilderness, which increased the Trinity Alps Primitive Area from 250,000 acres to nearly 500,000 acres. But you are being asked by way of the Huffman bill to accept adding an additional 260,000 acres to the 500,000 acres of our county already in wilderness. This legislation would commit nearly half of our entire county to wilderness designation. Sitting in your position, I would want every decision that impacts the economy of this county to be carefully and thoughtfully thought through. Since timber is the most valuable asset in our county, second possibly only to water, we deserve rock-hard, solid commitments in this bill, not vague assertions, that our forests will once again be productive and contribute to a strong economy, rather than being locked up by the failed management of the last 20 years. If your important support for this bill is to be added, I urge you to support it only after you are certain that there's something in it for us. Thank you.
Jake Goss and Chris Tiford. Haven't seen this kind of line of public speakers not on cannabis, I think, ever in this room. So I think it's really cool to see the community coming together and, and expressing, obviously, something they're really passionate about here. People from all, all sides of the county, all walks of life. You know, one of the things that I personally love about Trinity County, and I know that a lot of people love about Trinity County, and why a lot of us are drawn to live here, is kind of building your own destiny, making your own life, living in a place that, that you can live out how you want to, being in a small community where the community kind of dictates how we all live together. I think that every day that passes, every year that passes, we see more overreach from, you know, Southern California legislation, from, from the federal government's legislation. It's happening everywhere, it's not just here. I think that it's really important for us to look at, and, and I've obviously seen this in a tiny spectrum in my life compared to some of these ranchers and people who have been involved in the timber industry and have lived here for generations. But I think that it's really important that we look at very carefully giving away control, giving away options, you know? It's always better to have options, even if they're not all good options, you got options. I think that we need to look very carefully at giving away those options. I don't know a fraction of the stuff about this bill that probably everybody else in this room knows about, but I know in my short 31 years on this planet, that putting my faith in the federal government, or putting my faith in somebody that doesn't live in this valley, or doesn't live in this county, to manage our surroundings and really our life, I mean, people are losing lives in fires and whatnot, that's a scary proposition for me. Thanks.
All right, anybody else?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Valanca, Bill McSee. I want, I wanted to like this bill, I generally am in favor of wilderness areas. I love seeing headwaters included in one of the designations that that may grow, deserves a wilderness designation. But I think the previous speakers have really brought out a lot of extraordinarily valid concerns. Would highlight particularly the gentleman from Hyampom talking about local approaches to fire protection. We're at a crisis stage with the state of, of our forests, I think that's been reiterated numerous times. And some of the approaches are going to take some creativity while we get from where we are to where we need to be. Layering more regulation on top of what those creative approaches could entail is probably not the best way to stimulate bringing them about. So as far as the forestry aspects of the bill, I think we've really heard a lot that, that I agree with, and I do think a letter in opposition or, you know, a very long list of what we'd like to see changed is in order. But one thing I haven't heard so much about is the, is the water aspects, and that is designating a huge swath of, you know, creeks as wildly seen, river designation, and some extraordinarily short stretches, quarter mile. Again, in name, it makes sense, oh, sure, we're going to protect these creeks, but I think Trinity County has a long history of involvement with the federal government in terms of our water management. And I, I don't think our track record is one that says, hey, we want more of this, because it's going so good for us. You know, even it's these sections, you start, once they get these designations, you start getting into flowery considerations and things that start impacting riparian rights and start impacting the way people live in this county. So I just, I think it's, it's asking too much, particularly of the county. I wish there were smaller changes that I could recommend, but I think it's really kind of a back-to-the-drawing-board type of approach that I think. Anyway, I think that's the tone that you're getting. If we go forward, great, if we want to do more workshops, I think that's appropriate. But I certainly think at this point, the county has got to be in opposition to the bill. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, good morning. My name's Josh Bose, I live up in Coffee Creek. I originally came here because, my wife, to find out about the, the non-storefront thing that's happening. And then I got, then I started thinking about, how many fires have there been up here since I've been here? And how worse has it gotten since I've been here? And I like to come up with some very serious vegan environmentalist things that we have to deal with, that we're not fully dealing with. I mean, we can pass all the laws locally that we want to, to help with the fire control, but what we really should be doing is thinking about who we vote for in the presidential elections. We have a man there that does not believe in global warming. Now, I can't think of anybody up there who would not now agree that we have a problem far beyond the reaches of just locality. So I just want to ask everybody in here, for God's sake, to think about who you vote for, and more importantly, to vote, to not forget that that's our sacred right. A lot of people have died in battlefields because of that, of our right to vote, to have a say in what goes on federally and statewide. So anybody that you vote for, if they're not, they don't have to be a screaming environmentalist to see what's happening. If they don't question the person that they're voting for about that, about their environmental awareness, then just might as well throw the whole thing down the toilet. Because until we have leaders that really believe we have a serious problem, nothing's going to happen that's going to be substantially satisfying for all of us. You know, we all want to make money, I want to grow a lot, I've got my comedy license, I've got my state license, I can't grow anything if everything burns up. I put over $60,000 into my home because I knew this was going to happen. I've been, hopefully not praying that it didn't happen, but it is, it has happened, and it's not going to get any better. So please, whatever happens from this meeting, please, everyone vote in this room, and tell your friends to vote, and tell your friends to think about who they are voting for, and not just be partisan about this anymore. There's no, no room left in our history, our short future, to be partisan. And thank you for being there, and I appreciate every one of you for helping us get at least as far as we have gotten with the marijuana thing. And thank you for being there, Tom. And thank you for voting.
All right, anybody else?
Since this is a workshop-y thing, may I approach and speak real quickly?
You may try to keep it at two minutes.
It'll be, it'll be very short. This cake raised from Loeston, this pertains to if you have another meeting on this for public input and information. I'm requesting that you have the meeting in the format where the entire board is there, because, not just the ad hoc committee, because the entire board needs as much information as they can get. And I would also like to request that Representative Huffman did not write this bill. This was given to him, and it was given to him by several sources. And I would like the people to be included. And I would like the people to be included in that meeting, the environmental corporations, the lobbyists, the people that are actually requested some of this to be placed, like the Weaverville Information Center, those people to come forward and present to the people why they think this is good for us. Also, it clarifies any potential conflicts of interest, and I think that's important for us to know, because obviously, this bill came from somewhere, and we have the right to know who presented this and who's backing it. Thank you.
Since I gave Kate two minutes, I'll give anybody else two minutes. I see some chompers in bed.
Larry Winter, Hyampom. Just listening to comments, I just wanted to express my dismay when I first heard that they started working on this five years ago. That's about the same time we started on the collaborative, the Trinity Collaborative, where we had a professor from Humboldt State who specialized in collaborative-based resource management. The whole theory behind that is you get all these opposing views together, and you work out, it was mentioned earlier, you work out what you all can agree on, and then you move forward with that. This is similar, this bill is similar to what the Forest Service has always done in the past, and one of the reasons why we formed a collaborative, because they're, the way they've always operated, they presented a project and then asked for our opinion. And then we, you know, tell them what we think, and then they might put some alternatives up, which this didn't do, and then they decide what they want to do. Well, that's been frustrating for us here, because we wanted to be part of the design of the project. We even had people complaining about, we're still not able to do that all the time with the Forest Service, and yet, some of those same people helped design this project, this bill, that then just presented it to us, and then asked for our opinion. And so when they say that there's a lot of stakeholders involved, a lot of people involved, it came, from what I understand, after the bill was pretty much formulated, and then they asked everybody, what do you guys think? And to me, it was the same mindset as when a Forest Service project comes forward in the past. It's like, you know, but the ability to be able to be a part of designing a project or a foresting bill is so important to becoming a successful bill, and that this method just kind of blew away, didn't take into account. Thank you.
All right, with that, we will close the public hearing, or the public portion of this. So, I had a bunch of notes, but we took a lot of information that covered that. To the board, I would say there's other things that I found in there, not only does grazing go away in the rehabilitation zone, but also mining claims are limited to just what's there, and no new mining claims, not in the wilderness, but in the rehabilitation zone. So in a lot of ways, the rehabilitation zone is getting more restrictive and less economic, so something to look at. So, yes, John?
I, I'm here to make a motion. I just wanted to let you know, heads up here.
Okay, so, I think it is appropriate for us to have another public meeting in a different part of the county on this, but my question for the board will be, do you want it to be ad hoc, or do you want to be at the whole board and have a special meeting? So, I'm fine either way, because...
Well, I would like a whole board at least meeting here, with, like, as John presented, so we can have a workshop, and some of these questions answered in more detail.
I think it's very important for us to gather all the information before we bring in the show one more time.
Sure, I mean, I'm not saying not do a committee, you mean, I'm saying in addition to.
Because there's questions in here that I missed, that people bring up, and I think it's important for us to gather more in the collaborative profile, where we find out what people want and need, and see if we can bend that to this program, or not bend that to this program, and then just say, start over, or say, but that's part of this that hasn't really been done real well. Bobby, you have a...
Hold.
Whole board.
Okay, all right, with that, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion regarding HR 6596 for the Board of Supervisors to take a stance of no support pending additional public input.
Do we need John to add anything, address anything, before we make a motion?
Well, we've made a motion, and I apologize for that, so, if I was asked, because I made a motion...
What?
Are you willing to have John answer any of your questions and then sort of hold your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay.
To remember your concerns.
John, did you have any more input or answer questions that you want to answer at this time?
Thank you, I appreciate that, and thank you for pausing on your motion there. No, I think what we really, what I'm really hoping for is that you'd have another board session where we'd actually be able to come and make a presentation, and prior to that, whatever questions you may have, if you can get those to me, I can roll that into a presentation and make sure that we're covering a lot of the issues that we have. It's been informative here to hear people speak on their concerns, their specific concerns, had a lot of notes taken on that, so I would be prepared to address that at another meeting in the future, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, so back to your motion.
Absolutely, I'd like to make a motion regarding HR 6596 for the board to take a stance of no support pending additional input.
Do we have a second?
I haven't clarified that, I just, I'm not understanding the motion, I'm sorry, John, I've been...
I think we need to second it before we can clarify.
I'll second it for a discussion?
Thank you, what do you need?
So, we're not doing anything until...
We're taking a stance of no support pending additional input, which basically throws a sword down for those people who want to change our mind to present our side and to help to work toward supporting the bill or continuing with no support, or just going...
I understand, thank you for explaining, thank you.
So...
Did everybody hear that? Thank you.
So my question is to you, I understand that we're not, you're saying not to support it until further information, but what does that mean besides, I mean, do we write a letter to that effect, or we just say that we're not supporting until later?
Correct, I liked the last one. Unless you'd like to write a letter, I can throw a letter in there.
I have subsequent. I would move to take no stand until we have our workshops and are presented to the board again. There's a lot of questions that can get vetted out and concerned, a lot of good stuff was raised today, and I would like to spend more time vetting those questions out.
What's the motion?
Take a neutral stand until we are back to this discussion again, either vote as a community, no support, I mean, not no support, neutral.
So my understanding is your motion is to remain neutral until further information and that's affordable? Is that your motion?
Yeah, I think there's some great questions raised, I'd like to go in.
Okay, well, just make your motion, then we can discuss that.
I seconded, and I wanted to discuss a little bit.
Okay, so now we have discussion.
Mr. Walsh pointed out something, and I was listening when Mr. Walsh said, I was listening when he spoke, okay? Good chance this sucker couldn't get passed. I think that they've been working very well, they took your concerns in when you brought them up before. I think a neutral stance, while we go back to workshops, because they're obviously working trying to take concerns, and we should let him have a chance to address concerns on how he deals with it, and get the public involved, and then come back. So that's why I think neutral, just because Mr. Walsh, what he said specifically is that we could get overwritten in a big way here really easily, in the end, because of urban and all that other stuff, but they're working with us to shape this in our benefit as much as possible, we should at least let him have the opportunity to come back with, you know, his ability to fix some of the, or, you know, address some of the consequences.
Okay.
And just because of what you've said is exactly why we can take a stance of no support, because that throws a sword down, makes them work at working with us if they wish to change it, instead of just having them go, oh, okay, no problem, we'll come in and talk to everybody. I want them to prove themselves and start working for us and with us. I think he heard it from everybody, but that's why I'm going no support, if no support represents a majority of the constituents out there, but it does offer Congressman Huffman the chance to start coming back and making, coming up with public input and working with us.
Well, I think going on, if I may, Chair Supervisor...
John, are you done with your...
I'm done, sure.
I think the supervisor minds has pointed out, they have already shown some willingness to amend adjustments, they did so with some of Supervisor Grove's requests earlier a couple of months ago, so I'm not sure if we're quite there throwing the sword down, as you say, is quite the approach at the moment. I mean, it's not like they have not tried to work with some of our requests from board members, just saying.
I mean, do you have anything to put? I will say, either one I could go with, but I do tend to lean towards John, that I think it's, that we need to convey that we find serious problems as is today, and that we are willing to work and move forward on those, but there's no way that I could move forward as is. And so this makes that very clear to the parties involved that we need to do some more work.
Well, why don't we revise my motion to include a letter with some concerns for them to keep thinking about, and we may through this process.
The problem with, John's not requesting a letter, it's just that our stance is at this time where we can't support until we move forward. The problem is, the letter has a time and a place, but that's after we do our vetting. I mean, I've got a list of 16 things here, and I have about a minute five, so, and when I say a list, I mean, it's like, fix the fire problem, so it's not just like little...
Yeah, I know.
So, I think we need to vet this more publicly, and the concerns, and then come up with specific things, in fairness to them, we just can't say, fix the water problem, fix the fire problem, we have to say, these are the X amount of things that we move forward on. So, a letter comes after we finish that process, it seems to me. So, without any other discussion, we have a subsequent. Let's go ahead and do roll calls, just for record. The subsequent is to remain neutral until further work is done.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
No.
Supervisor Edmond?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
No. Now onto the, Rachel.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Edmond?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yeah.
Supervisor Martin?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. So with that, I would direct staff to, John, do you feel that Hayfork's far enough south, or would you like us to go a little farther south?
Probably Ketten Pond would be a good place to start. Oh, people need to drive the road to get to Ketten Pond. I got all five supervisors to drive that.
Trying to be serious, if you...
I am serious, but...
Why don't we just go to Ketten Pond, I'll go to Ketten Pond, I've been there in a month or so.
I'm going this afternoon if anybody wants a ride.
We can get to the San Francisco toll bridge.
This is something we probably should talk about, figuring out what we want to do with it, and we're going to have to let Congressman Huffman's office know what our plans are, but also where the money's going to come from, and to do this, since all five supervisors are being included. I settled with Ruth, but...
Why don't the ad hoc come back with some recommendations?
Well, that's fine, but we do need to do this sooner than later, because this will be in committee, or is it in committee?
No.
Okay, all right. So, John, I'm going to bring you up one more time and explain the process in Washington for us.
That's a loaded question.
And what's supposed to happen and not, you know, what, just, he is...
Sure, you know, there, even if we had a majority at this point, there's no way we can get this through this year, there's just not enough time in the legislative calendar to get it through. So the idea would be that we would reintroduce it sometime next year, possibly with changes, if that makes sense. If the House turns to the Democrats, it could get a committee hearing, it's not a highest priority probably on anybody's radar of the congressman's, but it could get a committee hearing there, you'd have testimony on either side, and it would go through the usual process of markup and all that, and then, of course, there'd have to be a companion bill in the Senate for that as well, so I know that Senator Feigstein and Harris's offices are considering that. Those two bills would have to then be normalized with each other, and then if there's a possibility for passage there, go to the president. I found it a little bit interesting, Mr. Walsh's statement, that the president would sign this bill. I am not in any way certain that the president wants to do anything for my boss at all, so I'm not so sure, and I'm worried about it. My guess is that we're actually probably still a few years out before something like this could even get passed.
So, we'll take one step at a time. So the spring, what does the spring mean in Washington? Cherry's blend?
Yeah, well, these days, you never know, but, I mean, the spring is, you know, everybody starts to submit bills at the time, reintroducing it to new Congress, of course, so, you know, those things get prioritized by whatever party is in control in either house, so it's not a fast process, is what it comes down to for something like this.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm looking for a target date to start, you know, a time to get new information, hard negotiation, but this would take place during the winter time.
Sure, and I mean, you know, when we made a number of changes just recently, I would just say that it takes a long time to make those changes, we have to actually craft the legislative language, we have to work with legislative council, we have to deal with committee staff, and they offer their input on that kind of thing. So I would just say that, you know, the sooner you can get us, you know, the information, the better, just so that we have time to work on that, but again, it's not, this isn't a lightning round here, so...
Okay, thank you, John.
Yeah.
Thank you for your candor, John.
Sure. And then so, yes, well, the ad hoc will take it, and then we'll come back to the board with some ideas, if you guys, where do we hide, if it's more than one, or what do we want to do? All right? That totally blows my agenda. Thank you everyone for coming on this time. All right, then we have, I think we're to close session. When I read this on, so, closed session, 6-1, Government Code, Section 54954.5, Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases, one, Pina versus Trinity County, Superior Court Case 18CD053. 6.2, Government Code, Section 54954, Public Employee Evaluation, Road Commissioner. 6.3, Government Code, Section 5494.5. 6.3, Government Code, Section 5494.5F, Conference with Labor Negotiation Negotiators, Counties, Designated Representative Dave Preps, Prentice Sophie Meyer and Shelley Nelson. Employee Unit Organizations, Deputy Sheriffs Association, Probation Base Officers. Skill Trade Units, Management, Compensation Unit, General Unit. Anybody have any comment on closed session? All right, we will take a short break, while we clean the room.
Okay, you're rolling.
We're recording.
Okay, coming down to closed session on 6-1. Okay, direction?
To staff.
To staff, 6-2.
Evaluation help.
Evaluation help, thank you, I knew there was someone. And 6-3, there was direction given to staff. That means adjournment.